All right, I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order. April 21st, 2025, it's at 5:00 p.m., we're close to it. We ask you to silence your cell phones and we get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Could you stand face the flag?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
I'd like to, uh, Don, you, uh, please remain standing just for a second.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening, Lord, and we just thank you for your many blessings on the city and its inhabitants, and particularly with Ross, Lord, that we're honored tonight, we just give you thanks for him and his blessing to the city, and so we just ask that you give the council wisdom as a discuss and work on items that are here to be approved in the future of the city, Jesus.
Thank you. Sit down. I got a couple things to say. First of all, I'd like to thank Julie for allowing us to have our meeting here tonight. Quick note on her, she's Executive Director of the Confluence, and she just won an award there the other night, there, keep Northern Illinois Beautiful Earth Day Award, and she was, she received that because she was the 2025 Friend of the Environment Award, and we'd like to thank her and we'd like to thank the Ross family, Ross's family, and everybody for coming tonight, we appreciate it, we'll get into it later. Okay, approve of the agenda, get a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get, uh...
I'm sorry, Mayor, we're going to strike the executive session.
What?
We're striking the executive session. So I make a motion to approve the agenda, editing out the executive session.
Second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Anybody just approved? Okay, approve the agenda with no executive session tonight, which is good news. All right, we'll get approval of the minutes, oh, we get public comment, anybody, well, public comment, for those that haven't been here before, we ask, we have proper decorum, we ask you that you use proper language, you get three minutes if you want to talk, and it's, uh, it's just a comment, it isn't a discussion, so if anybody wants to talk, just raise your hand, we'll call on you. Okay, that's over with. I know, I wanted to get that done first. Correspondence, proclamation recognizing Southlight High School class of 2025, Ross Robertson's achievements, and I'm going to read proclamation for you, Ross. City of Southlight, Illinois official proclamation honoring the Southlight High School senior, Ross Robertson, for his excellent in high school basketball and education. Whereas the city of Southlight takes great pride in recognizing individuals who amplify excellent commitment and leadership in our community, and whereas Ross Robertson distinguished senior in Southlight High School has displayed unwavering dedication, sportsmanship, and excellent talent for four years, four-year varsity member of Southlight men's basketball team. Whereas through the outstanding performance and relentless work ethic, Ross has achieved a historic 3,048 career points, ranking him fourth all-time in the history of high school basketball in Illinois. Whereas Ross has amazed and impressive 1,738 career rebounds, placing him second on the all-time Illinois high school basketball, and was nominated as IBCA All-State First Team for 2024 and 2025, whereas he averaged 29.3 points per game and 13.8 rebounds per game, and was nominated First Team All-Conference for the National or Northeastern Athletic Association NAC as well as 2024 NAC MVP, a testament of his skills, determination, and presence on court, and whereas Ross has achieved 1,135 field goals in his high school career from 2021 to 2025, ranking him first in the state for the most career field goals made. Whereas Ross has served as a role model for his teammate and source of pride for his school and his entire Southlight community, reflecting the highest ideals in athletics and personal character while balancing an exemplary academic standard, graduating with a cumulative grade point average of 4.39. Whereas Ross will attend the University of Northern Michigan this fall as a member of the school Division One basketball team, and whereas his accomplishments have not only elevated Southlight High School basketball program, but he's also a great honor of recognition of the city of Southlight. Now, therefore, I resolve that I, Tom Fitzgerald, Mayor of the city of Southlight, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our great city, do hereby proclaim April 21st, 2025 as Ross Robertson Day in the city of Southlight, and encourage that all residents to join in celebration, remarkable young man, such as historic achievements, and wish him the continued success in his future endeavors and on and off the court. I witness... How's that, Ross? I think it's amazing that not only you, your skills in basketball, but your grade point average is truly amazing for all of us. Joe has something to read, he has, he's our representative, but Joe, go ahead, tell me where you are.
Sure, Representative Joe Saznawski, I don't represent the community anymore, but I did for 10 years, so I'm also representative of the community always, so it's been a pleasure to work with the mayor and some of the aldermen here in the past, and so I'm here to present a resolution, and we might even have a second one coming from both chambers of Illinois Legislature, but Senator Chesney and Representative Cabello now represent this area, but they sent a nice little letter, and we've got a nice little certificate here, gold embossed and everything, and their note was just to congratulate you, the mayor covered all the accolades, so I won't go through all of them yet, but to congratulate you for being second place all-time career rebounds and fourth place all-time career points in HHS A boys' basketball, and congratulations on being an unbelievable representative for school and community. I know that 3.39 GP, or 4.39 GPA is pretty darn good, probably going to get a couple more As and might boost it up a little bit. Just on a personal note, I didn't get to see you play a whole lot, but I do have a son who's in the back there who played at Rockford Christian, and I know you guys practiced a lot with them, did get to see you at the RBC All-Star Game recently, which was phenomenal, to see all the best talent in the community play against each other, and I know you're going to do just fine at the next level, so congratulations on behalf of the state of Illinois.
I didn't get to read all the achievements, we got down on a separate page because it would probably be here until dark, but anyway, Ross, could you come up here, we want to, if you, and if you want to bring your family members, or if you...
He's probably got a speech now, right?
Well, go ahead. This is, we'll have this sign and another one just like it.
Oh, wow.
From by the school, anything like that.
I just want to thank the community, like, I could never do it without you guys, and like, all the support that you guys give me over the past four years is, is just amazing to me, and like, I couldn't do it without a single person in this community, and they all played a part, like, even Coach Ducking, Coach Miller, they've, they've been a blessing to have over the past four years, just teaching me everything that I know, and, I mean, my parents, like, I give all the credit to them for sure, because, like, I couldn't do anything without them, and they, they just prepared me to succeed in the rest of my life, and I just love them for that.
Parents can come up there and take pictures, whatever you want, go ahead. We're around the campus for a little bit. Where's your grandma? You can come up there. Do you want somebody to take a picture of one of your forms, too?
Yeah.
Okay, my turn, one, two, two and a half. Oh, gosh, you guys are so beautiful. Ross, also, we're going to allow you to take the sign outside, just in case, you know, the happenstance, they played with one and take pictures, but our board looks so good in red, like, we have to get a picture of these five people with you behind that wall.
That's why everybody had to wear a bra.
Yeah, I don't sell some bread, I just...
All right. How come you do that?
All right. Congratulations, you've made Southlight's roster, you have that best bike size in Southlight since the All-State team.
We're questioning, you know where that's going to be placed?
Yeah, one is going to be placed on Berry Hill Road.
One will be right in front of the fitness zone on Berry Hill, so if you are traveling eastbound, you see that?
No one, no one in the school has, will have it, and it's up to them to place it.
We're hoping that they put it as far east as they can on their property, so it's on both sides of the highway.
Like that?
Thank you.
You guys are taking off time to take some pictures?
Have you stayed at college? Put that with the door group? You know that gives a fun picture?
Well, I'm going to tell everybody right now, the fun part's over, so now we start, I don't believe, but then you guys want to stick around, you can stick around. Thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, we really appreciate it, very proud of you. All right. Right here, I got it. So I got it, we're, okay, we get approval of the minutes for, uh, minutes for regular council meeting held on October, or April 1st, 2025, get a motion, please.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, report to officers, finance approval claims for April 5th through 17th, 2025 for the amount of? Second?
Second.
Tracy, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, attorney report?
No report.
No report, wow, we're flying right along here. Get a report from the staff, wow.
Uh, I don't have a report, but I'm thinking to get back to Attorney Saznawski, I was hoping that she could talk just a little bit on our news that we heard back on oral arguments.
I take that back, we do have a report. So, as many on the council already know, we did receive the opinion from the Fourth District appellate court on Thursday, the court unanimously upheld the decision of the lower court in City of Southlight versus New Chapter Group, both affirming the $8 million in fines that were awarded to the city against New Chapter Group for the property at 200 Dearborn, as well as upholding the decision for demolition. That case could still be appealed to the Illinois Supreme Court, but the decision of the lower court was upheld in its entirety.
And that's excellent, believe me, we've, uh...
We're also looking at Mayor, uh, a prosecutor's settlement, so we'll get that out probably in a day or two.
All right, yeah, okay. We have a prosecutor's, he said, loads it in here. Okay.
Fire Department reports.
All right, good evening, y'all. Thanks for having me. I think you've got a copy of this available, if anything you'd like it, do you want it right now, or if you want me to bring it up?
Just bring it.
Special thanks in the last three months, flood ride, battle of the batteries, all fire stations, uh, it was about the least type of event we've had since the beginning of the year. I'll just start going through what department updates, we've made the transition to the Illinois Dispatch System with the Sheriff's Department, this is for improved efficiencies for spot times, uh, thank you, we've made a dispatch team for all our hard work we've been making a reality, as the, as a team, we continue to improve the dispatch system, and this has been a great transition for the city of Southlight, both respects. Dispatch, dispatch changes, we've also switched radio frequencies, we now operate on Ockton's frequency, this is another step towards coming by dispatching in top fire frequencies, it also is an improvement over the frequency we were using just for Southlight. Special thanks from Ockton for allowing us, as well as Chief Wilson, who was very hopeful and supportive through the challenging times of switching over to dispatch. With those dispatch changes, we have updated response plan with dispatch, which is something we couldn't do with the previous dispatching. This now allows us to automatically dispatch additional resources to calls immediately based on the type of call and not waiting on responses from a unit or an individual to dispatch that, so it's more of like an auto-response that has been put in place. With that, we've also identified portable radio issues in the area, creating some difficulties with active crews being able to communicate with dispatch. We believe we've identified the problem with the help of Chief Wilson, as they've had the same issue in the past, and installed vehicle repeaters, resolving the problem for them. We'll be looking and committing and installing these portable repeaters as soon as possible in our frontline units with a room of course. Both Engine 2030 and ambulance Medic 30 have had a few radio problems that have been in for repairs, Medic 30 has been, a new antenna was put in, it was going to be broken, we were having some transmission issues, Engine 2030 had one of the radios sent it back to the manufacturer for repairs, we're waiting on that to return, that is warranty work. Our new ambulance arrival has been changed to after the first of the year, we found this out while meeting with the manufacturer at the chief's conference, and the reason for the delay was just supply chains and, this is really what it boils down to, it was a little surprise we were expecting it this year, it's like, it's not going to be until next year, so we're hoping January, February. New firefighter was ordered here at the end of the year, is now back, it's come out and ready for use. The Southlight four gas moniker has been returned from the manufacturer, is tested and calibrated, and given a clean bill of health, other than the charger that was broken. I'm now looking to upgrade to a self-testing charger base, this is to, important to heat the unit up to the best operating conditions for the environment that it would potentially be working in, and it will give us a repeatable testing that is AFPA standard, meets the AFPA standards. NIFRIS reporting to the national database has been successfully updated and uploaded, and we are now current on all our NIFRIS reporting. The EMS building has also been successfully updated and uploaded, and we are current on our EMS building at this time now. We are, I am currently working on the state of Illinois EMS building requirements for Medicare and Medicaid due by the end of this month, I'm working with Son, Mayor, to get the information needed for that. Towneley, Towneley, side of the house, we have hired two people, right now we're in the process of bringing on three new firefighter paranights, and I got two offers out pending graduation from paranaids school, continuing to search for qualified candidates, and to continue to be successful. Rockets for the last three months, January, February, and March, respectively, 83 calls, 76 calls, and 96 calls for a total of 251 calls in the last three months, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any questions on that?
Is that call volume up or down by chance?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is that call volume up or down by chance?
I can pull the reports from prior to...
I just didn't know if we knew what to talk about.
Well, I can tell you from the previous three months.
Yeah.
It is up by approximately 35 calls from the previous three months, that's the only data that I've tracked since we took over.
Thank you. Eleven a month difference. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Unfinished business, moving on to unfinished business, discuss approved ordinance 2842 amending various provisions in Chapter 102 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2 Stop and Standing and Parking, get a motion, please.
Someone?
Second.
Okay, you want to...
Sure, Mayor, at the last meeting, we brought back up the discussion of changing our even odd parking ordinance by our ordinance to reflect a monthly change, so that even monthly, we park on even the side of the road at odd months, and that way we weren't having residents change every day, we do have a hard time, I guess, monitoring and enforcing the daily change, and we just thought that making it a little bit longer of a time span would be better, so we've been chewing on this for about six months. Commissioner Morris and I spent a lot of time with Chief months ago, and sort of started talking about potential ideas, I think this is the best thing that we can do, it's not going to be perfect in terms of our streets department or even sewer, there will be times where, you know, following a storm, we're going to have to call for emergency parking, we might have to put up temporary signage, ensure that street sweeper can kind of get through, so there may be some seasonal issues that we have to navigate, but by and large, I think this will make life easier for our patrol, and it will also hopefully make life a little bit easier for residents, and not have the daily, what time am I supposed to move, you know, now you just have to think about it once a month, and recommit your brain to parking on the other side of the road. So we did have this on the last agenda, but we had not the correct... So now we have the correct...
Keeping in mind why we're doing this, why we're doing this, because at times on some of our smaller, our streets that aren't as wide, we were, you couldn't get an ambulance down through there, you could, there was no way to get an ambulance through there or a fire truck, and fires clean in the streets in the wintertime, we'll have to deal with that, like you say, but that's the main reason for this, and the reason we went odd and even, because it's easy to remember, whatever month it is, if it's an odd month, you park, and you're an odd house number, that's where you park, on that side. Okay, anybody else got anything? All right. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner President?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approved ordinance 2844 amending various sections in Chapter 118 zoning regarding prohibiting flags, prohibiting flags commercial. Motion, please.
Someone?
Sorry. All right, this was, this was, we've passed this over many times, and we went to the zoning board twice now, it's come back, and what we, I read this, but what we, I mean, what we've really settled on was 30 days if you have new business, because I was, I was a stickler, I thought if you had new business, we want to bring attention to you, so you have 30 days if you put up a sign, a flag, wanted flags, you get 30 days for it, but you have to be starting to do business, you can't do it advertising your apartment building or advertising your bar or anything else, that's prohibited, and that's what we come out of the zoning board, and this board up here, we don't all agree on everything, but it's come down to, pretty much, this is what we ended up with. Anybody else?
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, it's, it is 30 days new business, but it's with an approved temporary sign permit.
Okay, on this now, new businesses, they come into town, they got new business, when they apply for that, when does the 30 days start? Now, if they don't, we don't get it done, and, you know, let's say it takes us three, four, five days to get it done, does that go off their 30 days?
No, when their assigned permit is approved, that's when it starts.
Okay, that way they...
Because not always do they start their business immediately when they apply for it, so they may do some remodel or something like that, they may have some things that are pending, so when they apply for the permit, then it'll go from that...
So they have, it's up to them to wait until they, until they get the business started that they, you know, if they want to put it in, and...
That's correct.
All right. I thought we were saying 60 years...
Pardon?
That's only property, you remember those flags that people put up, like, to say Happy Easter or whatever, you know, those big, big flags?
No, that's what, that's what we're talking about, ma'am, that's what we're talking about, go ahead.
The, weren't we saying 60 or 90 days when we kicked this back?
Yeah, well, we went down, we got down to 30 days, I wanted to do it 90, then we talked 16, now we're down to 30, but it's, uh, it's kind of a, we're kind of like negotiating for the best here, and I think we come up with...
I'm sorry. I personally don't think 30 is enough.
I don't either, but...
If you're a new business, if you're a new business, I mean, you know, I don't think 30 days is enough, but...
I thought, I thought 90 was enough, but I would have been happy with 60, but now we're down to 30, and I don't know, it's...
I can live with 60, I'm fine with 60.
I can live with 60, I don't like 30, I think 30 is not enough, that's...
Listen, Roxanne, you raise your hand.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, so this is the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they have weighed this issue now three times, this has been before them. The first time they were asked to review this issue, the direction of the council at that time was to eliminate other flags because of the problems that the city had been having, and so the Zoning Board of Appeals undertook that, they, you know, reviewed the issue, they deliberated on it during a ZBA meeting and agreed, and an ordinance was prepared to suggest that these types of flags would be prohibited in their entirety, again, because of the enforcement issues that we've been having. At the council level, there was a discussion about having a permit process, and at that time, multiple council members had difference, there was a difference of opinion as to the length of time that these could be permitted, whether it should be 30 days, or 60 days, or 90 days, or not at all. So the discussion was at that time to go back to the ZBA and to ask their opinion again for a recommendation, because remember, all zoning text amendments have to originate at the ZBA level, and they have to give a recommendation which then comes up to council. So again, this was presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they are supposed to be the recommending body to give you some feedback with regard to changes to the zoning code, and because of the amount of debate that had taken place at the council level, I do believe that Mayor attended that meeting as a council representative. At that meeting, the consensus was of the Zoning Board of Appeals was 30 days, again, there are some members of the Zoning Board of Appeals that believe that these, even at 30 days, are too much, because ultimately, again, they don't get taken down, and they end up in city right of way, or they end up being an eyesore. So, you know, one recommendation that I would suggest that the council may want to consider is to pass the ordinance as it's been prepared, you don't have to, but I'm just making a suggestion, pass the ordinance as it's been prepared, as it has been recommended by the... pass the ordinance as it's been prepared, as it has been recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then, if we find, if the city finds that there's more adherence to the ordinance, that the thirty days, uh, we're getting into a system where people are taking them up and taking them down as they're supposed to, and there can then be some consideration for a lengthy period of time, you know, perhaps the council may want to consider amending it at that time. But if you want to amend it from something other than what has been recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals, then what we're talking about is sending this document back to the ZBA for what will now be a fourth time for additional consideration, um, from them. So, you know, I would suggest that you may want to consider either, one, voting no, because you're not in agreement with the changes that's been written, or two, to at least pass what you have prepared before you today, so that we can at least begin a benchmark of which we can start to operate from.
Yeah, I believe it says on here, too, that there was, we weren't going to take them down. You got them up for thirty days. I didn't read their words, you're supposed to take them down.
They're approved to be up for thirty days.
Up for thirty days.
They don't need to take them up and down daily.
They don't do it anyway, but, but that was in our old, that was in our old order.
She means take, take them down at the end of thirty, are they?
At the end, at the end of thirty, right.
Correct. At the end of thirty, yes.
I still think sixty, but I mean, I'll, I'll take your suggestion for myself, and, um, yeah, we'll see, but, and like I've said before, we don't have that many new businesses coming in. We're only gonna be dealing with one every month at the most, and it's, it's a type thing that we'll have to adjust, adjust to it. If it's, if we don't like the thirty, we'll adjust to it.
I would say, Mayor, that since we talked about this at the last time, two additional businesses have installed multiple of these flags.
Yeah, I know.
So, there's without a doubt a code issue back then.
Right, they're out, they're out on the right-of-way, and I see them out here, and it's, this way, this way, if, you will not be able to put up a sign unless you're a new business, and it has to be new business, not just changing the name of the place, it has to be, uh, a new, whole new business, new owners, new everything. Uh, all right, anybody else? All right. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
No.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Mayor, it's you.
I'm gonna go yes, because I want to see a change, but I want it in place before now. All right, three, two, we got three, four, and two against. All right, moving on. Discuss approve, uh, twenty-eight forty-five amending section thirteen special use of chapter one-eighteen zoning regarding electric vehicle charging stations. Get a motion, please.
Someone, second.
Okay, who's got this? I don't know, nothing about it.
This one, um, so this is the electrical, um, the EV charging stations, um, anything that would be accessory to the business, not supporting the business, but accessory to it, would need to go through the special use process. Uh, we have a couple of the, um, uh, gas stations right now, I think three that have, excuse me, two, that have the EV charging stations. They, um, because they're accessory to the, the primary business, they do not have to have a special use. There's a third one that is building a structure with it, so that is accessory to the use, um, so they have to have a special use for it. And that seems pretty standard with everybody.
In other words, you're saying that if somebody's got a grocery store, but not a gas station, they have to have a special use for that?
No, it would, it would count on their regular parking, that would be just, uh, is supporting to their business, their primary business. If it's something that's, um, like a standalone or something like that, that's going to be accessory to the primary business.
Oh, standalone, okay, all right.
So, that would be a special use required.
Yeah, that was kind of vague in there when I was... Okay, all right, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss approved resolution sixty-six thirteen, approving agreement with the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association to provide a fire study service for the City of South Lloyd Fire Department. Motion, please.
Motion, second.
Um, Sonna, you want to?
Yes, I can take this from the mayor. So, following the, um, the, the whole meeting that the, the board decided to hold, uh, for the pull-ins, try to, uh, discuss the current fire tactics situation and how we got to that point and ideas for the future, um, it was asked that we consider bringing in a third party, uh, to sort of just do an evaluation of the decisions that have been made and also options for the future. So, we spent, uh, primarily, uh, Commissioner Morse and I spent literally hours with each, with each of these two entities. Um, we identified one set of potential, uh, you know, how, the criteria that they would evaluate us on, and we made sure that both parties were going to be comparing apples to apples. Uh, I think eight is the number, is the final criteria that we came down to. Um, we spent two hours over the phone on multiple occasions, uh, with McGrath, and then, uh, we actually spent in person, uh, a few hours with the Illinois Chiefs Association. They came here, one person was virtual, one person came in, in person, but we, we had a really good response from both of these. I think that we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, we did this study in two thousand sixteen, here are the many steps that our city has taken since then, um, we really are just looking for a neutral third-party option. So, I believe that these two packages are very, very similar in value, um, and just with the price difference alone of roughly a forty-thousand-dollar package, or roughly a ten-thousand-dollar package, uh, the staff recommendation, and really, this, I've only went in depth with this, uh, with the mayor and with Commissioner Morse, uh, but it seems like we are in agreement that the Chiefs Association is the correct bid to accept you. But you do have both of them before you, um, they were included in your package, and I think I emailed them out the day that we got both of them, uh, just after the last meeting. Uh, so if there's any questions, or if you're not sure, if you want to hold off, ask more questions, we can, but we have thoroughly vetted, uh, with both of these entities, and I think you have apples-to-apples proposals to bring.
All right.
I also want to add that I do not think we should have both of them done. That was an idea that we threw out. I think it would be a really bad idea to have both of these entities running circles around each other and, you know...
Anybody got anything, or?
I would say the thing that stuck out with the, um, the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association bid is, um, they discussed, you know, talking to our community partners, and, and, uh, I felt like that aspect of their bid jumped out at the, the first, the minute I read it, you know? So, um, you know, obviously, I hadn't even had a chance to say my opinion on this before I saw it on here, but, you know, and I've said since day one, I think that's important. You know, we've got, you know, Rockland, Harlem, Roscoe, and Boyd, three neighboring partners that, you know, they said they need to talk to the partners and see, you know, kind of how things are working, and, uh, I think that's paramount to this.
I believe so. I said, uh, we did this in twenty sixteen, and when we, when you reflect back on twenty sixteen and look at that, we have done some of the stuff since that time, but one of the main things they said in twenty sixteen was, you're gonna need help, you're gonna need, you're gonna need to move on, maybe, uh, you know, shore up your, your employees, get more employees if possible, if not, combine with another force. And, so, the reason we're, one of the reasons we're doing this is we need to, uh, we need to make sure people feel that they read the report, we're gonna make it public, we're gonna make, so everybody sees it. Whatever they say, they say, we have nothing to do with it, and then we'll move on from there. I mean, we'll make decisions with whatever happens then. But, uh, it's not gonna, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we get a complete report from them, and they will, uh, it's, both reports were the same, though. Go ahead.
I think it's important to know that it's a ninety-day verse, yeah, ninety-day process, it'll be mid-July before year back, so I think we need to set expectations on that.
Ryan?
I'm gonna go, Kenny, I'm gonna go with it.
You go to what?
Well, Kenny, I know what you're saying.
Okay, all right, all right. Kenny, you agree?
I am, catch up with the Illinois Fire Chiefs. I think, uh, when that report comes back, um, I think that will help explain to the community that this is not something that South Lloyd has an issue with, this is something that the fire service has an issue with, and, uh, is gonna take major changes down the line.
Well, I think, uh, when they get this report, we need to have, sit down with it, with the people that makes this report, one of their representatives, and have him explain, go through the report and explain everything, so we understand it fully, and we're not just reading through the line between the lines or anything, but, uh, that's one thing I'd like to see happen.
Yeah, they said ninety days, as Ryan pointed out, I mean, so, if we can get this signed, it's in the next couple of days, it takes us to mid to late July, they're gonna need to present it to us, so I would actually piggyback off of Ryan and say it's probably gonna be early August before it's been presented to us.
All right, sound good?
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Yes, discuss approved resolution sixty-six fourteen, appointing a member of the fire pension board, discuss, uh, fire pension board, and that was, I have his name here, and it's Mindy Swick. Good motion?
Motion.
Do a second?
Second.
Uh, anybody want to discuss this?
You know, we rarely have both federal members throw their hat in the ring for these past years positions. Mindy has served with the city in a couple of different capacities previous to this, uh, so we actually reached out to her to ask her if she was interested. Um, she served, uh, she helped with the Centennial Committee, I know, in seventeen, and then she also, uh, served on our, uh, community board of the, the sales tax referendum that we had last year. So, Mindy, uh, enjoys being involved, but does not want a big stage, and this was one that with a little bit of coercion, I was able to get her to, uh, to sign and help out on her pension plan.
All right, we thank Nicole Castillo for being on that board. Now, uh, we'll nominate Mindy. Tracy?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor, it's you.
Yes. Okay, discuss approved agreement between West Nighthawk for the Police Department, uh, motion?
Motion. Second.
Uh, Chief?
Okay, we use a similar product now called Lexus Nexus, um, reads online, and people offers more, their product is called Nighthawk, and we think it offers more, and it really helps our investigations for processing digital evidence, and it's only a hundred and sixty dollars more a year, so we're gonna drop the other company and start this company.
Hey, you think it's good for you? More favor. Uh, anybody else? All right, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Mayor, it's you.
Yes, discuss approval offer employment letter to Jennifer Robinson, and, uh, get a motion, please.
Someone, second.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
I mentioned this before, Mayor, um, so really, uh, since we lost our deputy clerk, uh, we should have a deputy clerk always appointed, just in case Tracy Patrice would ever get a fine. She loves when I say that, but it's true. Um, there's, there's one clear candidate in City Hall, uh, the person who has been acting as that number two, uh, for at least six months now, um, and that's Jennifer, so what you have before you is a small increase. Uh, her responsibilities are not going to change drastically, uh, at this point in time, uh, but there is this inherent responsibility that should anything happen with Tracy, she truly does need to be the number two, uh, and we need to have her prepared to start learning, uh, some of Tracy's job launch, and should, uh, whatever the word is, also, there is a day in May that Tracy will be, uh, traveling to see some family, so we're gonna need that number two in action real soon.
What's that, what, a dollar an hour rate?
We propose a dollar increase, um, I think it's a really fair number, uh, for the responsibility that she's taking on, uh, but also, you know, she's only been with us for a couple of years, and, um, you know, I, I told her it would be a small proposed increase, and she's a part of our whole plan, so I'm proposing a, a dollar after just a little bit of research and homework, I, I searched all the deputy clerk positions on Indeed, and, uh, and Tracy and Don and Roxanne and I have done this thoroughly for about the last ten days, so it's just kind of a recommendation, but...
Well, if you're, I know, we're around the office enough that we know that Jennifer stepped into her role very seamless, it would seem like she, she knew the job before, but she, she was never here, and, and I'm, I'm impressed by what she's done, and, you know, both of them, they, they've done excellent, because we were left without either position for a while. Uh, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor, it's you.
Yes, discuss approved, uh, request for a public works event on Donner Drive for the Public Works Department on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, from four to six P.M. Motion.
Someone, second.
Steve?
Yeah, this'll be our public works week thing that we've done yearly now, uh, we're gonna try to tie, yep. He's got one of those. Uh, we did hats this year, uh, all the commissioners got one sitting on their box at the city hall. Uh, we're gonna try and coordinate it between the two buildings on Donner Drive, park them in the roadway, kind of shut the roadway down, that way they can see the sewer plant or our new building, and then have some of the equipment parked out on the street for the people to walk around and look at.
I've been there before, doesn't, people get to see all the equipment that we've purchased in the last few years, our new sewer plant, everything, it's a great time.
Yeah.
And really, we, we thought it would be a great idea to block it between the two roads, which are not a lot of traffic, and it's only for a couple hours, and you think most of those companies are kind of out of their way, um, but we haven't got a food truck, I thought it'd be awesome to have a food truck in the middle with some equipment on both sides of it. Uh, we only have two, uh, two food truck vendors that have their annual leases for South Lloyd at this point, both of them are unavailable on this night, uh, so we may still shrink it up to, you know, max it at treatment plant the way that it's historically looked, but if I could get a food truck in, that's totally what I was after, we're trying to do more of a block party deal. We'll see if I can grow somebody in and kind of get their, it's like two-hundred dollars for an annual food truck license, I really hope that I can talk one of the vendors that's kind of out of the bubble and has done before to get signed up, come do this event for us. So, far.
Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor, it's you.
Uh, yes, discuss regarding rental registry.
I could take this, if you'd like me to. So, since the last city council meeting, um, Mayor and I and, um, the city administrator participated in a meeting with Paul Arena, Paul is a member of the Winnebago County Board, he's also, um, involved with the Rockford, um, Rental Association, the Land Department Owners Association, um, and we kind of discussed some of the things that the city talked about at the last city council meeting. I did put together a draft ordinance for council's review, I forwarded that to the city administrator, to the city clerk, and also to the mayor. Uh, the draft ordinance just, um, includes the, um, items that the council talked about at the last meeting, um, it's not on your agenda for approval tonight, but, um, unless there's any additional comments for the ordinance from the council, it could appear on a main meeting. Um, it would require a, um, application to be filled out, very similar to our business permit application, or business license. Um, there is no fee outlined under the ordinance, just a late fee if the application is not filled out and turned in annually by January first. The ordinance is drafted that registration would be required by January first, twenty-twenty-six. The application would include the property address, um, the number of rental units in the structure, name, mailing address, email address, telephone number for the owner of the structure, if the owner is a business entity, um, the application would then have the name, phone number, email address of a natural person that was controlling the property. Um, if there's a local agent, the name, mailing address, physical address, and email address, telephone number of the local agent for the structure, um, and then, um, a certification indicating that the owner, um, will ensure that there is language in the lease, um, indicating that the tenant understands that it's the requirement, um, of the tenant, um, as well as the property owner, to ensure adherence to the City of South Lloyd's property maintenance and nuisance ordinances, as well as our crime-free housing ordinance. Um, that particular, um, item actually came out of the conversation that we had with Mr. Arena. Um, he indicated that, um, in these, um, rental registration applications that he's, um, seen in the past, that that was an important piece, was to ensure that the tenants understand the requirements of, um, compliance with city code. And including that, um, as a requirement in the, um, in the application, ensuring that then it ends up in the lease would be important. Um, also, language indicating that, um, leases will contain the crime-free lease provision or crime-free housing lease addendum. Um, there's sample language in the ordinance, um, addressing those issues. Again, um, relating back to the city's existing crime-free housing ordinance that we already have. And then finally, no registration fee unless it's not submitted by January first, in which case there would be a late fee of a hundred dollars. Um, that's really the entirety of the ordinance. It's pretty simple. Um, I believe that Sonia and Tracy both have it and they could circulate it for council review. Oh, it's in your packets as well? Okay. So I can answer any questions you might have. Again, it's not on the agenda for passage, it's just for discussion.
Well, it's come about because we have, we have landlords that are absentee and we have landlords that take care of their places, you know, right up, everything's code, right up the code. But we also have the landlords that don't. And that's what, that's what we're trying to do. And we don't want to penalize the ones that take care of their place. But we want to make sure we can contact any landlord or his manager when we find a violation or when we have problems. Otherwise, we go from phone to phone to emails to emails and everybody chases their tail until they try to find the, the proper contact. And, uh, this is something that, uh, Paul Arena was death, deadly against it. And he didn't want, and after we sat and talked to him and we discussed our problems with him, and he understands, I mean, he's a landlord, he understands that the situation that we've had. And, uh, we didn't want to start charging people a lot of money, but we want to know who owns stuff, you know, and we are, we're gonna do it. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, if we pass it, but I'm, I'm all for it, I know that. Anybody else?
I'll jump in. Um, I think I made my position known two weeks ago when we talked about this. I'm not in favor of this. I feel like we have tools in our toolbox, you know, that we're not using currently. We can do a better job of getting contact information through the sewers and we're not, we're sewer billing and we're not doing that. So I don't understand why we would go to this extreme at this juncture when we already have options that we aren't currently exercising. I tried to think of an example for this, this afternoon. And, uh, it's gonna sound corny, but I feel like we are calling a mechanic about a new motor and we haven't checked to see if we have oil. We haven't checked our spark plugs. We haven't done any of the required steps and we're jumping to a rental registry. And, you know, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm not in favor of it. Uh, I think it's overreaching and I think that we need to do a better job using our existing tools in our toolbox before we jump to this.
What damage do you think it would do if we just pass this?
I feel like this, I feel like we're using bad apple landlords that have put a sour taste in the mouth. And we are applying this to everybody at once. And I don't agree with them.
If you think you were a good landlord, would you, would you be against writing your name down that you owned the building and, and that way that somebody could get ahold of you? We don't have, we have problems. That's the only reason this come up. I mean, I sit in these code meetings every month and we have discussions of ten, eleven people that we're having problems with and we're chasing these people, trying to find them. And it's our staff that's putting in all the time. And when they do find them, we sell it. We sell it like a forty thousand dollar code violation, what do we sell it for, ten thousand? And I, I believe that's wrong. I believe that that land, that landlord collects that money, that rent every month. Collects the money and then what does he do? He takes that money and he don't put it back in there because he don't even pay it, he don't fix the code. Otherwise, he wouldn't have that. And I know the one guy that come up to me and he was mad, yelling at me. And I told him, I says, you know the best way to fix that? Fix your codes, you know, so that you don't have the violation. I said, why don't you do that? Then we move on. We don't, we don't pick on anybody. We see it, you go drive by and see it. Well, yeah, I mean, that's your, that's your priority, you can do what you want. Where, uh, everybody read it and whenever it comes up there, we'll vote on it. It's, that's why there's five of us. Anybody else? Do a motion, do a second? Call a favor? Thanks for coming.